The Chamber has hosted this candidate forum for nearly 40 years and we're pleased to provide a forum for our city council and mayoral candidates to be introduced to our local businesses and residents. As an organization, we strive to provide programming and events that educate and engage our community. We hope today's event does both for you. It's my pleasure to introduce our event emcee today, Jim Sidlacki. Jim is the Director of Communication for Adams County. His background includes more than two decades as a journalist, including 15 years as a television news anchor. Jim and his wife Kim live in Thornton with their three children. Jim has been hosting our candidate forums for over five years now and does an outstanding job at helping us to engage in an unbiased conversation around the issues and opportunities that impact our community. Please join me in welcoming Jim to the stage.
Well, good morning, everyone. I've been doing this long enough where I bring my own coffee cup now, right? A holster for it and we are ready to go on a Friday morning. Well, we want to thank everyone for showing up, not only on a Friday morning, but for such an important forum. We have three city council positions, candidates for each of them, as well as the Mayor of Arvada. It's my pleasure to serve again as your moderator this morning. It's always exciting to come back to Arvada and hear the energy and passion from all of the candidates. It's always a great exchange of ideas and a very civil tone in this community. Before we begin the forum, I want to go over a little background and review the format of today's event. The Arvada Chamber of Commerce is committed to hosting a forum that allows candidates -- their candidate opportunity to share their perspective in a very fair environment. The Chamber values full transparency when it comes to these candidate forums. The process of question selection began with surveys in government affairs committee along with local businesses and partners. The topics were then developed into questions by the Arvada Chamber of Commerce staff. Questions were given to all candidates this week on Monday evening. They were received at the same time and in the same format. In addition, as a completely neutral party, I have reviewed the questions to make sure they are least presented in a completely unbiased manner. It's also important to note the Arvada Chamber of Commerce does not endorse candidates. The Chamber recognizes that their membership base presents various interests and relationships and encourages members to make their own decisions around who they are willing to support. We're going to run through one district at a time this morning, ending with our mayor's race. Candidates will be invited to offer brief opening remarks, followed by a Q and A session, and ending with closing remarks. We will notify candidates by holding up a sign when they have 30 seconds remaining and then once again when their time is up. At that point, I will very awkwardly hover around them to make sure they're ready to decide. We do have a lot to cover today, so we sure appreciate all of the candidates auditing those programs. And finally, the Arvada Chamber of Commerce recently launched a campaign promoting further stability in Arvada. Each of the candidates who have joined us this morning have made an incredible commitment in putting themselves out there and we know how passionate each of them is about making Arvada a great place to live, work, learn, and play. But we have to ask that they maintain that level of respect for each other in this process by representing the following standards. We can all be stronger by working to understand diverse viewpoints. We acknowledge the impacts of our behavior on others. And we respectfully disagree and commit to constructive conversations. In addition, as an audience, we ask that you are respectful of all candidates' perspectives. Please don't comment, boo, or cheer any of the comments you hear this morning. All right, now that the ground rules are laid out, let's get started with District Two. I will invite candidates up individually to provide opening statements. After you complete your opening remarks, you may exit the stage and return to your seat. Once all the candidates have completed their remarks, we're going to invite all the candidates from that particular district within the mayoral race back up for Q and A. With four races to cover, we expect this to move pretty quickly this morning. First up in the opening statements is Ethan Lutz. Each candidate will have three minutes for opening statements. We need them both? Apparently we need both.
Thanks for having me. Thanks for moderating here, Jim. Like I said, my name's Ethan James Lutz. I live here in District Two and I'm running for the District Two seat. I want to thank you guys again for having me here and giving me this opportunity. I moved here to Colorado over 15 years ago. I went to college on the western slope of Arvada, Western State College of Colorado. And I moved here to Arvada a little over three years ago, excuse me, to raise my family, my young son named Huxley, my daughter Sadie, my wife Kelly. We moved here because Arvada has incredible quality of life. There were opportunities for homes, jobs, business, everything like that. Arvada was very appealing to us and we were looking for places to move to. Since moving here three years ago, I've been very involved in our community, doing annual events such as block parties, Fourth of July events. We host events for our neighbors. We're very close in our community. We all know each other's names. We know our kids' names. We watch our kids. Everyone can do favors for each other. We have a real strong sense of community in where I live and it's just only a couple minutes away from here. So with that run for city council, I want to take that sense of community and I want to take it to the next level. I want to go bigger. I want to get involved. I want to be a voice for the community and more importantly, I want to be an ear for the community. And I want to listen to what neighbors are saying, what businesses are saying. I want to be there and I want to hear everything. I want to bring a fresh perspective to tackle these issues. There's a lot. We talked about them on Wednesday, homelessness, affordable housing. There's a lot of things going on for Arvadas of all ages. Senior living is another big one. And business especially, because healthy business is crucial to healthy neighborhoods and vibrant communities. So I'm excited. I'm happy for this opportunity, believe it or not. I'm just a blue collar, hardworking resident. I'm not a politician, but I really care about Arvada's future, the happiness and the health of the community. So, thank you.
All right, next up for District Two, T.O. Owens.
I'd like to thank the Chamber for hosting this event, my wife Patty, my two girls, Emily Ann and Meredith Kay, and all my friends and neighbors that came out on this early morning to support me. I appreciate it very much. I'm running for city council because I listen to my wife. Over 20 years ago, we moved to Arvada as we recognized a community that we would want to live and raise a family in. We lived in a small home down in Alta Vista that happened to have two square feet of that home in the floodplain. And as we moved there, we were promised that there would be a new bridge over Ralston Creek and that that would remove us from the floodplain. Five years later, that bridge was still unbuilt. And I was grumbling one morning as I read the Arvada report and my wife walked in and said, "We have a new family rule. There's no more complaining unless you're willing to do something about it." At that point, in the Arvada report, the back of that report, there was a call for citizens to apply to a capital improvement committee. I had no idea what that was, but I said, "Bridges sound like capital, so let's go do that." And sort of blindly applied. I had no idea what that process would look like and was appointed to that committee where I got to serve with just so many great people. I served with Senator Zenzinger and Representative Krafttharp and any number of people in our community, which was really a baptism by fire and a great way to understand how our community operated. Since that time, I've been sort of the definition of involved. If there was an ad hoc committee, I was asked to serve on it, which would include the steering committee for Ralston Fields where we are currently redeveloping Ralston Road. I served eight years on our planning -- or, sorry, eight years on our Board of Adjustments, the last four years on our Planning Commission, the last three of those as chairman of that Planning Commission. I also was lucky enough to be asked to lead the 3F campaign last fall and I'm happy to say that was successful. And we are going to address some very important road projects. As we move forward, I would like to continue that work in our community. As I look around, we have over $250 million of infrastructure road projects left to do. We're tackling those in the right way. We're tackling the two most important and we're going to continue to do that in bits and pieces and continue to reevaluate and make sure that we solve what really is the most important problem in our city right now, which is transportation and in general. The other things that are very important are road maintenance. That roadway system is a $2.5 billion asset to our city. And just like any other asset, like your home, it needs maintenance. I would appreciate your vote and I ask you to allow me to continue serving our community in this way. Thank you.
We'll close out District Two with Lauren Simpson and a reminder to both T.O. and Ethan that you'll return back to the stage following these opening remarks for some Q and A.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Lauren Simpson. I'm a candidate in District Two, obviously. I first want to thank the Chamber for hosting us here today. I would also like to open by wishing happy anniversary to my husband, 11 years today. So I'm very happy about that. And also a quick happy birthday to T.O. Why am I running for city council? I'm here because you have to be the change that you want to see in the world. I know I'm not alone when I say that the toxicity of the current political environment really bothers me. It's gotten out of hand, I think, and I think we need to do something about it. And while I'm certainly not in a position to go out there and challenge Cory Gardner or anyone in this upcoming election in 2020, right here at home is where you can make the most difference and see real tangible action being done on the ground. And that's what I want to do. My background is in international relations and diplomacy, literally. In my professional life, I help advance North American relations for the betterment of us all between the United States, Canada, and a little bit Mexico as well. So I want to be able to bring those skills to Arvada, to our city council, for the benefit of all of us. I believe that I can do that. I work with politicians of all political shades and stripes and backgrounds. I also work with the business community and that's a huge part of my background as well. I work with chambers of commerce, just like this one. I work with industry. I work with businesses, the Colorado Business Roundtable. And just a couple of years ago, I was part of the graduating class for the Colorado Chambers Execs Program for Young Rising Leaders, which I was very proud of, that experience. I work here in this community as well. I volunteer with the Keep Old Town Beautiful Cleanup Group, once a month, picking up trash in Old Town. And then I also serve on Jefferson County Public Schools District Accountability Committee. So I believe in this community. I believe in what it can do. And I believe in all of us. So I would like to ask for your vote because I think that we can do some really special things together. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lauren. We'll have the two gentlemen join you back up on stage as we begin some Q and A for District Two. All right, just to remind everyone, we're going to draw three questions from the bowl and I'm going to allow each one of you to grab one and go look at it and then just hand it to me. Each of you will have an opportunity to answer, obviously. We're going to work from ladies first, back towards me. All right, Ms. Simpson, what should the City of Arvada do to meet the growing needs around transportation and infrastructure improvements?
This is a complex issue, obviously. Can you guys hear me okay? Sorry.
The green light should be on. There you go.
There we go. Perfect. So this is a complex issue that obviously can't be answered in a single one-minute response, but we can touch on several -- you know what? Here we go. Can you guys hear me okay now? All right. So this is a complex issue that can't be handled in a one-minute response, but there are important things that we can do to work on transportation, starting with how do we move people together? Our public transportation systems, working with Chili Cook and RTD and our other transportation partners, are critically important. Our bus systems, how do we address first mile, last mile? How do we get people to the G line, either by foot, by bike, by bus, whatever, so that they can commute downtown and get cars off our roads? That protects people's cars, their investments in their own home life, as well as our roads with less wear and tear, alleviates congestion. I believe in bike lanes. It's a safe sort of principle to move people along, safer for our bikers, and frankly, it's better for our motorists as well because it helps get them where they need to go in a little bit quicker time. We need to look at road maintenance. I know T.O. touched on that in his opening remarks. It's incredibly important that we look at road maintenance, repairing our hot holes, repairing our sidewalks, and investing in widening and securing the safety of our roads so that everyone can do things safely.
I think you can turn those mics back on. We're going to try this again. And just a reminder that if we can, let's keep those on because I think those are the microphones our friends from Channel Eight are recording based from. So, Mr. Lutz, what should the City of Arvada do to meet the growing needs around transportation and infrastructure improvements?
Well, I think the most important thing is communication with the residents. There's been a lot of talk about the developments and takings and stuff like that. I think a lot of people need, they need communication for one and they need information because a lot of residents, if they don't have the information on what these projects are, typically people tend to just be against them. But once you actually educate people on the true costs and benefits of transportation projects and what benefits they'll bring to their neighborhoods, a lot of times people get right on board and they're very supportive. So communication, education, I think one of the biggest things is the money, obviously. You can't do these projects if you don't have the money. So maintaining a healthy budget for transportation costs, I know the council has increased their funding for it this year, which is great. I think looking at even more in the coming years is important because, you know, bond projects like 3F and bike lanes and sidewalks and everything, you can't do these without the money. So maintaining proper budgets is another important part.
All right, Mr. Owens, what should the City of Arvada do to meet the growing needs around transportation and infrastructure improvements?
So I think this is two-phased. We have to maintain our roads, so we have to increase our road maintenance budget. Our city staff tells us we need about $15 million a year in road maintenance every year. Last year, that number that we spent was about six. This year, our council increased that to about 10. When elected, I will continue working with our council to get that number to the 15 that we need. And then we have to backfill the dollars that we didn't spend, so we'll have to consider using our one-time money at the end of the year to do that. The other part of that is building out that $250 million of infrastructure that I spoke about before. We've got a number of road projects on the budget, on the docket, and the smart way to do that is what we're doing. We have addressed 72nd and 58th. Our staff told us that those were the two biggest impacts that we would have. The next thing to do is pay those bonds off and have our staff evaluate our road system and tell us what the next two most important projects are, or three, or however many we can get done. Thank you.
All right, so we are on to the second question. We'll begin with you, Mr. Lutz. The state legislature recently passed a bill that allows cities to pass their own minimum wage. The state of Colorado will have a minimum wage of $12 by the year 2020, which is right around the corner. So the question is, do you support the City of Arvada having a higher minimum wage than the state of Colorado's minimum of $12?
That's an interesting one. As a rural city, I know we are allowed to make those rules, but I think immediately expanding a minimum wage by sometimes just an arbitrary number, say $15 or $18 or whatever makes people feel good, sometimes that can have a pretty negative effect on business. So before making a decision like that, I would definitely have to either put that straight to the will of the people, but even before that, I'd have to go around and talk to working families, see what kind of benefits it can actually bring them, and business, to see what kind of actually negative effects or positive it could bring them as well. So again, it would be probably up to the people, but I'd need more information. And then also, a lot of studies have shown the best way to increase minimum wage earners' benefits is to increase the EITC allowances for earned income tax credits. So that would be another thing to look at as opposed to just raising the minimum wage. It would also have to be in lockstep with cost of living. So, thanks.
Lot to consider there. Mr. Owens?
So this is an easy answer for me. The answer is absolutely not. Our market is regional. It is not local. If we raise our minimum wage here in Arvada, we will absolutely disadvantage our businesses in Arvada. If, I look over and I see my friend, Mr. Marriott, sitting there smiling. If we raise the minimum wage, his business is going to go nuts because all of the people that buy ski equipment in Arvada are going to find it cheaper right across the border in Wheat Ridge. I'm sure he would like it for his own business, but it would be terrible for our city. So again, the smart thing to do is let our market handle what our wages and our minimum wages should be and let the regional market tell us what that should be. Thank you.
Ms. Simpson, same question to you.
I think that, again, this is a more complicated answer that requires a lot of thought and in particular, a study for what the cost of living in this city actually is as compared to our neighboring communities. It's no lie that cost of living has gone up. I do think that there's a lot of fear around raising the minimum wage that has been not quite borne out when it's been raised in other major metro areas. And so what I would like to do, I do not think we're Denver. I know Denver is raising to $15 an hour. We are Arvada, so I'm very proud of the state legislature for passing the nuance in the minimum wage bill that they did to allow cities to be able to reflect their city as opposed to just having a statewide mandate. So perhaps we're somewhere in between what would be required of a rural area and of Denver. So that's what I want to look at. I want to look at what the reasonable cost of living wage is for a family in this city and make sure that people who have 80 hours a week between the two working parents can afford to live in this city. When people have income, they spend it. That's good for our city.
And the final question, we'll begin with you, Mr. Owens. If elected to city council, what will you do to understand the diverse and growing needs of Arvada?
So when elected, I'll continue doing the things that I've done for the last 15 years in our city. I will talk to people. I'll come to meetings like this. I will host community forums. I will be involved. And that's the only way to know our city, as I walk and talk and knock on doors in our city. It's amazing the outpouring of how many folks are happy and love to live in Arvada. I think that my involvement in our community and all the touchpoints I've had over the last 15 years give me the right perspective and I will continue that work. Thank you.
Ms. Simpson?
I would echo a lot of what T.O. just said. It's about being involved in the community. It's about talking to people. And it's about creating community spaces where everyone feels that they can come together and be a part of it and be heard. So let's create forums just like this one that brings people together. We have a lot of miscommunication in this community between business and everyday residents that happens sometimes. And so let's create spaces where people can work together and they can understand the good work that the business community is doing and how they're actually working to listen to the people because we need to get outside of our own echo chambers. That's something that I believe I can do for us. That is something I have experienced doing and that is going to be critical if we're going to move this city forward together.
And Mr. Lutz?
I've got to agree with T.O. The way you do it is to be there, to be out there and be that ear to listen to people, not just coming to events that are put on, but putting on events, getting yourself out there and being that ear to other residents in other districts. Someone told me once, the most important part about being on, say, an assembly or council isn't really what's going on in your district sometimes. It's being aware and in tune with what's going on in the other districts because it's not just your job to focus in just one area. You need to branch out, open your arms, open your heart, open your doors. So yeah, the one thing you can do is just be there, be available, have events, listen, and be respectful because, you know, sometimes some people can't make it to things like this, so sometimes you have to bring it to them.
Great. We're going to move on to the fire round. At this point, our folks up on stage, all of our candidates, will have three words or less for the fire round. And I'm going to ask one question and we're going to work our way, well, we'll start with Mr. Lutz this time and work around, and then the second question for Mr. Owens. The first question for Mr. Lutz and all three of you, what is your favorite restaurant in Arvada?
Three words or less?
Three words or less. Hopefully it fits within that.
Four barrel.
Ospatronkis.
The Arvada Tavern.
Good answers, all of you. No one said Pizza Hut. What do you want to get? What did you want to be when you grew up?
An astronaut.
Okay.
A singer.
A dad.
It's worked out. Okay, Ms. Simpson, we'll start with you. What is your pet peeve?
Indecision.
Mr. Lutz?
Blatant laziness.
Litter.
I don't think anybody likes any of those.
You can come pick up trash with us in the Old Town group.
Okay. Who is your role model?
My grandfather.
You repeat the question?
My wife.
Hank Aaron.
Hank Aaron? All right. Hard to beat, 755 home runs. Okay. Favorite sweet treat? And this one, you're going to kick us off here. If you need more time, let me know.
No, I got this one. Flan.
Flan?
Ice cream.
Ice cream?
Cinnamon bread pudding.
Good stuff. Okay. Closing remarks, we'll have 60 seconds for each of you and we are conveniently going to work our way in the order of Lauren Simpson, Mr. Owens, and Mr. Lutz. We have 60 seconds for each of you.
Once again, I want to thank the Chamber as well as all of you to be here on a Friday morning. That's incredibly important and we appreciate your time this morning. Again, I want to ask for your vote because I think I can be a positive difference in this community. Not only do I have the experience to be able to do this job, but I'm also kind of fresh. I have new ideas. I have bold ideas and I'd love for you to reach out to me, come talk to me. Let's talk about those ideas. It's not about a four-year vision. It's about a four-year vision and creating a community, making the investments in this community that we need to now so that it becomes a city of the future. I don't want this to just be a city where I want to raise my daughter. I want it to remain and grow into a city where my daughter will want to raise her daughter. So you can find out more about me at laurenforarvada.com. I'm Lauren Simpson and thank you.
Mr. Owens?
Thank you. So thank you to the Chamber. Thank you, Jim. Experience matters. As I move around the city, the last 15 years have been enriching. They've been a learning experience and I look at almost every part of the city and I see a place that I've touched. Being part of all of those projects and contributing, contributing to all of those projects has been one of the most rewarding experiences of my life. And so I would ask that you allow me to continue to do that, continue to be a member of this community that leads and works on impactful projects in our community. My name is T.O. Owens. You can find out more about me at OwensForArvada.com and I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
All right, 60 seconds for you, Mr. Lutz.
So I want my kids to grow up in a thriving, healthy community with the opportunities that we have now. This community has definitely enriched my life, my wife's life, and my children's as well. So as a council member, all I can promise is to just be open and listen to communities, families, and especially businesses because business is a cornerstone of healthy communities. So I won't deny it. I'm probably not the most experienced person up here, if you can't already tell. I might not know as many people in the room as some others, but all I can do is promise to be honest and faithful, 100% transparent. I promised that to my wife 10 years ago. And I promised that to everybody here too. So, thank you.
All right, let's give a round of applause to our District Two candidates. All of them with great ideas, well-articulated this morning. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to District Four candidates and for the candidates heading up, it's going to follow the very similar format that you just saw. We're going to have opening statements, no longer than three minutes. We'll follow that up with some Q and A and those fire round questions before your closing remarks. Our opening statements begin from District Four with David Jones.
Thank you to the Chamber for hosting this great event this morning. I'm running for reelection to Arvada City Council, District Four. I will preference my remarks by acknowledging that all of my successes have come by working in collaboration with other businesses, churches, civic leaders, and combining our strengths to reach our goals. I have used that same philosophy the last four years while working with Arvada City Council. Your support and vote will allow me to continue providing strong leadership for the future of Arvada, to continue building an economically strong city, to encourage continued investment in our city, to continue building long-term relationships, I'm sorry, long-term infrastructure and maintenance plans, to continue bringing city partners and citizens together to discuss high-impact building processes, and to continue connecting our community to what we hold dear, a place we call home, where we live, work, play, and learn every day. If you know me well, you know that my faith and my family are central to who I am and who I want to become. As a boy, my mom and dad instilled in me principles that are my guideposts even to today. I work hard to honor principles that are my guideposts even to today. I work hard to honor those guideposts. I have been married to my best friend and confidant for 21 years. She is a support and an ally in the causes that I care about. Together, Ann and I have made Arvada our home. I am a product of Jeffco Public Schools, and we have raised our two boys right here in Arvada. Jake, my oldest, is a sophomore at CU Boulder, and Parks is a junior at Ralston Valley High School. We live in the light and rock community and with our two dogs, Lucy and Murphy. In my day job, I am the president and CEO of Sanzio, which has our headquarters right here in Arvada with 120 employees. I have sustained and built our business to excel even when economic times have been difficult. I have always been fiscally conservative and have made it a point to live within my means. I take that same approach with my business. We remain debt-free, which lifts the burden of economic hardship. Over the last four years, I have used those same fiscally responsible attributes and skills in my service as a member of Arvada City Council. With growth and change comes challenge. We have seen a rise in homelessness in our city and questions about housing affordability and taking lasting care of our infrastructure. These are three areas of great concern for me as I work every day to find responsible and reasonable solutions. We may disagree on how best to solve these issues, but if we agree, we love Arvada, and we want to keep it moving forward with great optimism, we have to work together. I am David Jones, and I ask for your vote and your support.
All right, we'll invite Jordan Hoenstein up to provide his three minutes of opening remarks. And a reminder, both David and Jordan, after you've completed this portion, just head over to the high-rise tables, and we will begin the Q and A.
Hi, everyone. It is good to be here. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for hosting this debate and Arvada Center for hosting it as well. Two years ago, when I ran for office, I was unable to attend, so I'm very happy to be able to be here today. My name is Jordan Hoenstein. I am a lifelong Arvada resident, a Colorado native, and a candidate for Arvada City Council, District 4. Two years ago, I ran for city council because people wanted change in our city. The result was getting a historic amount of votes, which to me was a sign that people were looking for change. For too long, people feel that our current leadership isn't representative of the change that our city is having. Instead of making good deals in the best interest of people, too many people feel that bad deals have been passed. From $30 land deal to the Jefferson Parkway, to the increasing cost of housing and the lack of affordable housing, I'm running on a platform of change and progress. I have years of experience in our community, working in politics and being a leader, and I have a comprehensive plan for Arvada that builds upon the best qualities and improves upon it. I'm ready to fight for better, safer deals, and I hope that you'll join me along that way. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, make sure that the green light is on on the microphones in front of you as we begin the questions. We have three, which means I'm gonna have to pick one this time, I guess. All right, Jordan. All right, gentlemen. First question for you, Mr. Jones. We'll start and then reverse order with each question subsequently. If elected, what will you do to improve opportunities for businesses to be successful in Arvada?
Well, that's a great question. As a business owner in Arvada, that's paramount to our success. We have to continue to encourage businesses to take risk and to come to Arvada because that's really how we can be a city. Without the businesses, without the retail centers, without the primary jobs, who really are we? Where will those tax dollars come from? How will we be able to take care of the infrastructure that's so important? So I'll continue to encourage all businesses to come and make investment and thrive right here in Arvada. Just last week, I was at a ribbon cutting for an orthodontist who took the chance to go as far west in Arvada as possible, to open up an orthodontic facility and to bring her services to the west side of Arvada. I so appreciate people like her taking risks in Arvada, and I will continue to work with the business community so that they know that this is a business-friendly place and this is where it happens.
Mr. Hoenstein, if elected, what will you do to improve opportunities specifically for businesses to be successful in Arvada?
Well, it's obviously a very important question. For me, I believe that our businesses thrive and our people are thriving. So this for me relates to having a city council that's passing deals that offers affordable or attainable housing and infrastructure and transportation options. For me, like I said, when our employees are thriving, then our businesses are. So I'm advocating for an increase in affordable housing options, which, especially in District 4, we are mostly devoid of. When we bring in affordable housing, then we bring in the best talent. The best talent creates success within companies. My first job was in Arvada. I was working at Steamers, or now it's Jack's, in Five Parks. So I saw firsthand at a young age some of the trials, challenges facing small businesses in Arvada, and what happens when we employ diverse people, when we employ people of different talents. So for me, it begins with affordable housing and making sure everyone can afford to live here.
All right. We'll flip back over. Mr. Jones, you'll have the first crack at this one. What is your position on the Jefferson Parkway and why?
Well, as the chairman of the Parkway Authority, I support the development of that roadway. I think it's a very important regional piece or an asset to our community. It will allow traffic to move regionally. If you've been on Indiana in the morning, if you've been on Wadsworth in the morning, if you've been on some of these north-south routes, there is traffic moving from Superior all the way to Golden and everywhere north and south. So the Parkway is an important part that has to be, an important linkage that has to be completed around the Denver metro area. And I support it, and it's my hope that we can do it responsibly and safe.
Mr. Hoenstein, what do you think about the Jefferson Parkway? Tell us why.
This is one area where my opponent and I disagree. I opposed it two years ago, and I strongly oppose it now. And the majority of people that I speak to oppose it. It is not only what I see as a bad deal, as it doesn't make sense, it's not an option for people to get onto, it's too expensive, but it is a potential public health risk and a potential environmental risk. I don't think this is an example of good city planning. I don't think this is an example of good judgment. When there's too many factors that show the risk of contamination from rocky flats, to the fact that all of our surrounding cities have not supported it, I don't think this is a burden financially, morally, socially, that our city deserves to take on. So I'm against it. I'll always be against it. I'm doing everything I can to oppose it.
All right, and the final question, we'll begin with you, Mr. Hoenstein. Many businesses note sales tax remittance as a top challenge for their business. If elected, how will you address this concern at a local level?
So I think this is a challenging question, and there's still a lot that I think needs to be explored into it. Again, I think it refers back to just building within our people so that our money can stay within our community. And that includes making sure that we're not passing deals that use tax increment financing, making sure that every taxpayer dollar is staying within our city so it's not exporting out of it or that it's not being taxed incorrectly.
Mr. Jones?
So thank goodness for people like Tracy Kraft Tharp, who have taken this message to the State House and have fought for businesses and have fought for the ease of sales tax. Our role is to continue to partner with the state and go through the beta testing to ensure that these sales tax issues for businesses can be simple. Owning a business and having to understand all of the ins and outs around tax are complicated. I don't think many people who start a business are CPAs, so they have to hire really smart people to help them through that. And so again, I applaud Tracy Kraft Tharp and her leadership at the State House to help, I guess, make this better for business owners in Arvada.
All right, gentlemen, we're on to the fire round. You saw how it played out last time. It's gonna be the same question, so you get to cheat a little bit. You've probably thought about these answers. Mr. Hoenstein, we'll begin with you. Your favorite restaurant in Arvada?
Rib City.
Lot 1.
All right, Mr. Jones, what did you want to be when you grew up?
A police officer.
Politician.
There's hope for you yet.
Yes.
Your pet peeve, Jordan?
Repeatedly pressing crosswalk button.
More than once, like the elevator, right? If you hit it five times, it's gonna come faster.
No difference.
Mr. Jones?
Dishonesty.
All right, Mr. Jones, first question here for you. Who's your role model?
My mother.
Okay.
And my father.
And Mr. Hoenstein, favorite sweet treat?
Anything pumpkin spice.
A warm chocolate chip cookie.
It's your time of year.
I know.
And it's also your crack at closing remarks. You'll have 60 seconds to kick it off.
Again, I want to thank the chamber for hosting this and the Arvada Center. My motto is going further. So in my eyes, going further means doing the most, doing the best, and doing the most good for everybody in our city who's living here now and hopefully will live here in the future. I pledge to go further if elected by fighting for affordable housing, by passing the best deals possible that are gonna benefit everybody in our city. I'm fighting to stand up for better deals, better judgment, and you can learn more about me and my comprehensive policy for Arvada at jordanfor, the number 4, arvada.com. And thank you, and thank you for moderating.
Growing up and raising my family in Arvada is a privilege, and I want to keep Arvada strong. There's no family, no school, no neighborhood, and no community can thrive without responsible and involved citizenry. I'm running for reelection to Arvada City Council, District 4, to continue building a stronger city, a closer community, and even safer place to live and raise our families, to continue inspiring citizens to invest in our community, to continue providing a strong economic future for Arvada, to continue building a long-term plan for maintenance and infrastructure, and to continue bringing our city partners and citizens together to discuss high-impact planning issues, and to connect our community to what we hold dear. Help me do so with your mail-in vote by November 5. Here's what I need you to do. I need you to speak up, pitch in, and reach out by going to my website, www.davidfor, F-O-R, arvada.com, and learn more about me and why I continue to be the right choice for Arvada. Thank you.
Let's thank both of our candidates from District 4. We're gonna move on to our at-large candidates, and our opening statements will come in this order. At-large candidates for city council. Jeff Cannon will lead things off, and Bob Pfeiffer will follow. Three minutes, gentlemen, for your opening remarks.
Morning, everybody. Nice to see so many friendly faces this morning. I wanted to just start by saying thank you to the chamber for all of your help over the years. And the other thing I wanted to tell you was a friend of mine, Carl here, he says, "You never talk about your family very much." So I thought this morning with my opening remarks, I'd tell you a little bit more about my family. Started out in the 1800s. We had the Coal Ranch. That was my family's name, and they had a thousand-acre ranch at one time. And of course, I'll tell you the rest of the story, maybe at tomorrow's community forum. But anyway, so I'm fifth-generation Arvaden, and my family's loved living in Arvada for five generations. And I have children and grandchildren, but they're over in Centennial, so they're sixth and seventh-generation Coloradans, but they're not Arvedans. But anyway, father of four, grandfather of three, went to Arvada High, went to Metro State for my undergrad and CU for my masters. I've served on planning commission. I've served on three chamber boards, as well as a bunch of other government affairs, community affairs, different things. So I've been involved over the years, been involved with the junior chamber. And so I know Arvada. I know what we need to do here. And sometimes it's not a matter of figuring out the logistics of things. It's a matter of asking the tough questions. And that's what I think that I can bring to the table. It might be just a little bit different than everybody else, is I'm not afraid. You know, if we have a homeless problem that's creeping up on us, you know, we have to ask ourselves some tough questions. So with all these issues that come up, you know, asking the tough questions is gonna be my gift or my quality. But anyway, as far as everything else, I hope that you'll consider supporting me. And I appreciate your waking up this morning early to have breakfast with us. Thank you.
All right, reminder for Mr. Cannon. You'll follow Mr. Pfeiffer back up on stage in just about three and a half minutes now, as we introduce Bob Pfeiffer for his opening remarks.
Good morning. And you know, just a quick comment. It always still gets me nervous to come up here with a great crowd like this. And I think all the candidates for being up here and expressing their views and their opinions. I would like to thank the Arvada Chamber for hosting this wonderful event and giving us and the community the opportunity to learn about all the candidates this morning. I want to thank my wife and family for being the foundation and allowing me to serve my community. My sons are fifth-generation Arvedans, and we're proud of it. Back in the early 2000s, when I met my wife, or my soon-to-be-wife, she said, "I wasn't able to marry her until I actually moved here." She was a fourth-generation family. So, well, that begins the best part of my life. I moved to this great city, and I married my long-life friend and best friend, Rochelle. I have 25 years of leadership experience in telecommunications and the IT industry. I worked for companies as large as 72,000 employees. I've led engineering and operations, vendor management, product management, as well as business development and contract negotiations for some of these large companies. I'm proud that I recently negotiated $50 million worth of assets to the state of Colorado without spending one taxpayer dollar, except for my salary, to do the negotiation. I'm asking the voters to reelect me for the third and last time in this position as the Arvada City Council member-at-large. I want to continue to focus on Arvada's future by elevating importance of affordable housing from senior housing to just our graduating kids coming out of college to come back home. We need to focus on continuing on our road maintenance while improving our traffic flows and operations of our roads. We need to ensure that all members of our community are at the table when discussing matters that impact the quality of life, fostering that inclusive community we all want. When I left the private, oh, sorry, I took my concerns as a board member and chair of Dr. Cog, the Denver Regional Council of Government, seriously. I completely changed my career, and my wife helped me negotiate my pay cut. Because why? I went to the public sector. I left the private sector two years ago and joined the management team at CDOT. CDOT recruited me because of my passion to leverage technology while solving, or at least attempting to solve, reducing traffic congestion and saving lives. Changing my career to focus on something I was passionate about demonstrates my drive for a solution. I've sat at local, regional, and actually, that picture is a national table, trying to solve the impacts for our community. Our city has and will be a great community. Yes, we have challenges, and yes, they're not easy to solve. But we need to listen to the businesses, the community, our neighbors, to drive noticeable results, to ensure that we have a sense of community while protecting the charm and character we all love. I'm Bob Pfeiffer, Arvada City Council member-at-large. To find more about me, you can visit me at bobpfeiffer.com. Make it simple. I look forward to your support and vote in November 5. Thank you.
All right, we'll invite Mr. Pfeiffer, Mr. Cannon, back up on stage. Gentlemen, reach into that fishbowl, grab one of those questions, hand it over, and I'll grab one We will begin with Mr. Cannon answering the first question, and it is, "Does the city of Arvada have a role in developing attainable housing in our community? If so, what is that? And if not, tell us why for folks watching at home or here in the audience. Attainable and affordable or interchangeable when you talk with folks from different government agencies?" So I just wanted to clear that up.
I think we do. But I don't think it's a subsidy-type thing. I think what it is is we find out which programs are available on the federal I think what it is, is we find out which programs are available on the federal, the state, the local level, and make those programs more... It's a communication problem, really. It's people, they don't know all the different places that they can go to get help, and I think the city should be a resource for that. So I don't think we need to supply incentives as much as just find out what those programs are and be able, when somebody walks in the city doors, say, "Here's a list of the programs that can help you get attainable, more attainable, or affordable housing." The other thing is, when I served on the Planning Commission, we had the Comprehensive Plan, and when we did that, we certainly set different zones aside for different things. And I think that that could be a possibility as well. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Cannon. Now, Mr. Pfeifer, "Does the city of our Vada have a role in developing attainable housing in our community? If so, what is that? If not, tell us why."
I think as City Council and Councilmembers, we're convenor of people, and I think it's our role to convene folks to solve a common issue, and I think we should be looking for partnerships. Recently, I've been helping some firefighters, actually, my wife has been helping some firefighters find some new homes, and there are programs out there in the private sector that are solving some of these issues. And we need to leverage those partnerships and encourage those opportunities. The opportunity I'm referring to is what they call hometown heroes. It's a 1% off the homes. The private industry's doing it on their own. They're addressing the concerns of reducing costs to first responders, nurses, teachers, to reduce the cost. We, as a city, as a convenor, we should pull together those opportunities and promote those, and continue to find opportunities to better our community through attainable or affordable housing.
Obviously, not an our Vada problem. This is regional, statewide, and the Colorado Sun did some great reporting on this. If you haven't had a chance, check out their website. I always advocate for good journalism, and the Colorado Sun did a wonderful job looking at what some of the communities around the state are doing in the mobile home space. So if you have time, it's a great online read for more about this issue. All right, Mr. Pfeifer, if you'll follow some of the our Vada Facebook pages, that's up to you. Seems that at times, our community feels a bit divided. Again, not just an our Vada thing. What would you do if elected to City Council to create a sense of community for all residents and businesses?
Boy, I have a lot of thoughts on that. But, you know, I think the way to solve the diverse, or the conflicts, especially around keyboard warriors is what I call them. They like to hide behind the keyboard and create conflicts and negativity and mislead our public. I have always, when I find that, and I'm associated to maybe the end of that, you know the best thing to do is to meet, to go and have coffee and meet at a table and discuss those issues. Yeah, I think it's more important to sit at a table and solve those problems than to try to hide behind a computer and create discourse in our community. So first and foremost, we need to be open and transparent and available to everyone who has questions about their community, their government, their elected officials. If you all know me, 99% of the time, I pick up the phone when you call. So my phone is all over and the internet, and you're more than welcome to call me anytime. Hopefully, not in the middle of the night.
Mr. Cannon, I'll repeat the question for you. If you follow our Vada Facebook pages, it feels like the community can be divided at times. What would you do if elected to City Council to create a sense of community for all businesses and residents?
Well, the first thing I would say is it'd be really boring if we were all in agreement with everything. So I'm happy that we all have different opinions, and I'm also proud that most of the time that I've been in any kind of politics, people have always disagreed, maybe at the forum, but then after the forum, they went out and they could have a drink, or go to dinner, or, you know, become friends and stay friends, even though they might be totally different on different sides of the fence. But the important thing is, is as long as we can kind of step that level up to make sure that after the fact, after we've had our vigorous debate and decided that, you know, somebody's a winner, somebody's a loser, maybe, but at the end, we all come back together and remember that we're all friends, and we're all trying to do the same thing, is make our Vada a better place to live. So that's what I would do. Thank you.
You're welcome. I believe you'll have the first crack at this question as well. What do you believe the role of urban renewal is in our Vada?
Well, I think urban renewal started out for some of the areas that we needed development in our cities, and I believe that they've done a good job in finding places that needed to be replaced with new places. Some of the Newtown stuff is all part of urban renewal, and they've been instrumental in that. I believe that they've, haven't had as much of a role as late, and that maybe that they need to come into the City Council auspices as far as that. And that way, the council can still direct them as far as what areas they want them to look at, what properties they want them to visit, and then they can be more effective. And the council can also be more effective as far as communicating their ideals and what they want to see urban renewal do.
Great. Mr. Pfeifer, same question. What do you believe the role of urban renewal is in our Vada?
So is and was. So I would think was. I think our Vada urban renewal did a great job in evolving and advancing our community. I think is, it needs to reinvent itself. I think what we've been seeing lately is businesses collaborating with the city closer in City Council, then there's not really a need for urban renewal to go and look at blighted properties. There has been more opportunities. Example, the King Supers in Candellis was a negotiation between City Council and us, even though I think that's still an urban renewal area. But we developed that. We, the city, with the private sector, helped make that a reality. There was not a need for urban renewal to be in the middle of something like that. So I think that urban renewal has to reinvent itself and look at it a different way. I don't like the fact that we always have to look at properties to see if they're blighted or not. I think that we should encourage our businesses and commercial properties by programs with economic development and other opportunities to work with the city to improve the quality of the property, and thank you.
All right, we have closing remarks now. 60 seconds from each of our candidates, and Mr. Pfeifer, we will lead things off with you.
Well, thank you. Oh, yeah, I wanted that part.
Thank you.
I was excited.
It is the best part.
We should do that more often.
I have a boss, too. Her name is Kami. Thanks, Kami. Fire round questions are the best part. So, Mr. Pfeifer, we're going to begin with you. Best place to eat in our Vada, your favorite restaurant?
Last Petronca's Stubborn's.
Whoa. Rule breaker. Okay. Mr. Cannon?
I love Mexicans, so Santiago's is my favorite.
Okay. What did you want to be, Mr. Cannon, when you grew up?
A doctor.
Okay.
A police officer, actually.
Good. Pet peeve, Mr. Pfeifer?
Chewing with your mouth open.
That is a nasty one. Traffic for me.
Traffic. Yeah, okay. And a favorite sweet treat, Mr. Cannon?
My grandmother's nameless cake, actually.
Okay.
Oreos with milk.
And a role model.
For me? My grandmother.
Mine was Abraham Lincoln. I really loved Lincoln.
Good one. Now we'll move on to some closing remarks. And to lead things off, Mr. Pfeifer.
Well, thank you very much. Again, I want to thank the Chamber and everyone for coming out this morning and hosting this event. You know, I want to be your our Vada at-large council member because I truly care about how our community will grow and evolve into the future. I want to make sure the unique character of our city remains intact while thoughtful growth is managed. I want to ensure that we continue to enhance the parks and support our schools, which are both the foundations of our neighborhoods. I want to bring my professional experience and expertise in improving our transportation challenges, pushing our city teams to continue to be innovative in solving this growing issue. I believe that the city should continue to focus improving the quality of life for all of our residents and businesses, and enhance our visitor experience in our community. I want my family, my friends, my neighbors, my community to be proud of our Vada. I'm asking for your vote. I'm asking for your support on November 5th. My name is Bob Pfeifer.
Mr. Cannon?
I'd like to also thank the Chamber for hosting this this morning, and thank you guys for coming out for early breakfast. For me, it's not so much an issues thing. I think everybody knows the issues, and we know what we need to do. I think it's a leadership thing. And for me, it's taking a role, an active role, into the city government and making sure that it's responsive for all the citizens. The way you do that is you ask the tough questions, as I've said before. And a lot of times, we're so satisfied with, let's just kind of ignore it and hope it goes away, but that doesn't solve many problems when you just ignore things. So for me, taking an active role in government, making sure you listen to all the conversations that you get to listen to, because our Vada's full of great people, and they all have good opinions. Whether you agree with them or not, they're all valid opinions, or most of them are, I believe. And so you just take those in and try to make the best decisions you can for everybody. But you need to listen, and you need to be responsive to the folks. So thank you.
We want to thank Mr. Pfeifer and Mr. Cannon. A round of applause for our at-large candidates. All right, who's going to be mayor a year from now? Good question, right? We're about to find out some of their opinions and platforms. Our opening statements for our candidates for mayor of our Vada begin with Harriet Hall, followed by Dave Palm and Mark Williams. Three minutes each. Harriet Hall will lead things off.
Good morning. I want to say thank you to the Chamber for sponsoring this forum, and I want to thank all of you for coming out early in the morning to show your love for our Vada. For 34 years, I provided cooperative, collaborative, and visionary leadership for Jefferson Center for Mental Health. I have the proven and the trusted leadership skills to lead our Vada that we need to be a vibrant and caring community, as well as a collaborative player with other regional governments. This is similar to what I did when I led Jefferson Center over 20 years ago in their response to the Columbine tragedy and providing mental health services to our community. It's also like I did two years ago, when Jefferson Center stepped up to the plate, when Arapahoe House closed its doors to bring withdrawal management, or what we all call detox, services to keep them in our, in our community. I'm running for mayor because I love our Vada. I loved our Vada when I moved here in 1988. I loved it when Old Town was almost all antique stores, and I love it now with its vibrant and thriving Old Town. I have worked to support the our Vada community for years, being involved in a range of activities, including rezoning the Stocky Walter neighborhood, planning for the G Line, serving on the Citizens' Capital Improvement Committee, and the our Vada Sustainability Advisory Committee, working on affordable housing issues, and serving as a member of the Board of Community Table. It's time for our Vada leadership to focus on smart, responsible development, including new housing projects and infrastructure that's both sustainable and attainable. We need to address the issues of homelessness and affordable housing in our Vada, and we need to address the issue of the Jefferson Parkway and be responsive to the widespread health and safety concerns of both citizens and scientists. We need to support our businesses, both large and small, and kudos to the our Vada Chamber of Commerce for the support that they provide, particularly for small, local businesses. Our Vada's economic vitality is well-served by assisting creative new ideas and supporting our ongoing successes. We need real transparency from our local government and real lines of two-way communication with the residents of our Vada. This will help to give our citizens better and more timely awareness of new issues, and they will find new and innovative ways to bring our city together as one community. Thank you.
All right, Mayor Williams is on deck. Dave Palm is up with three minutes for your opening remarks.
Again, thank you to the Chamber for this forum this morning. I'm Dave Palm. I'm a fourth-generation our Vada resident. I graduated from our Vada High School, a redskin, in 1969. Couple of weeks later, I went to work out at Dow Chemical at the Rocky Flats plant, cleaning up the contamination after the Mother's, excuse me, after the Mother's Day fire out there, then into production in the plutonium area. Following that, I spent a dozen years in the car business, sales manager, finance manager, insurance. Next was a six-year period homeless on the streets, here and in LA. Following that, I went into multifamily housing management, including Section 8, and after that, operating a small IT business here in our Vada with my son. I'm running for mayor because I want to play a role in keeping our Vada a great place to live, and I believe that I can bring some common sense ideas to our city government, including the creation of an ombudsman to resolve issues and problems that citizens have with the city, using new revenue sources like legalizing the retail sale of marijuana in our Vada, and using that revenue for street repair. Call it pot for potholes. And I believe we should make it easier for citizens to place issues on the ballot. Anyone that's known me for more than 10 minutes know that I say what I think, not what I think you want to hear. I don't, that sometimes comes across as heartless or insensitive. I don't do political speech like collaborative planning, evidence-based practices, multifaceted issues, any of that kind of language. I love my hometown. I want to maintain it, not only for my son, but for future generations. Thank you.
We'll let Ms. Hall and Mr. Palm know that you'll be returning up to St. H in just a moment. First opening statement from Mr. Mark Williams.
Let's put some energy in this. It's a great day in our Vada. I've got it. Let's be proud of this city. I want to thank the our Vada Chamber. Thank you, Jim. You all know me. You know how involved I've been in this Chamber of Commerce over the years. I want to thank my wife, Luanne, our four kids, our seven grandkids. Now, I'm the youngster of the candidates for mayor, but we do have a few grandkids, and we're proud of it. And our friends, many of you who are in the room, for all your support. I came to our Vada in 1979 as a law clerk. I've never left. I love this city. It's an incredible place, and as a new attorney, it was suggested I get involved in this Chamber of Commerce, and I did. I cut my teeth on this Chamber of Commerce. It helped me grow my law practice, and frankly, it grew my life. It's been a very important part of who I am. I served on the Government Affairs Committee of this Chamber, and eventually was elected to be the president, which you now call the chairman of the Chamber. As the mayor, I have received the Chamber's prestigious Chairman's Choice Award, and I'm very proud of it. I've been very involved with our schools. I love to go read to the students, talk about politics, talk about government affairs, and I'm very proud of my role in coaching a local high school to be the national champions in the high school mock trial championship. I served on the County Library Board and helped bring Stanley Lake Library to our Vada. I served 12 years on City Council as an at-large council member, and I think those of us who love our Vada can look at what our city councils have done over the years to make this such a special place. These past eight years, it has been my distinct honor and privilege to be mayor of this incredible, incredible city. I'm also respected by my peers. I was elected statewide to be the president of the Colorado Municipal League, and currently, if I'm reelected, when I'm reelected, I will become the chair of the Metro Mayor's Caucus. While it's important to work on regional and statewide issues, I have never lost focus, and you all know that. I have been here every step of the way for what's been important to our Vada. We've added three community police stations during my tenure. I was and will continue to be a champion for this Chamber, and also for the Gold Line, and how important it's been for our community. I helped bring Red Rocks Community College to our Vada and helped get the funding to expand that campus here. I support businesses, large and small, and that was part of why the Jefferson County Economic Development Association selected me as elected official of the year. Through mediation, I helped-- Through mediation, I helped bring greater financial responsibility for issues in Arvada. I ask for your vote very much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Palm and Ms. Hall can return to the stage now as we begin some questions and fire round questions, I promise, this time. And as they make their way back to the stage, how about a round of applause for the staff here at the Arvada Center who've done a great job, as always, this morning. I think there are only three questions left in the bowl. So the suspense is gone at this point. Just going to take the bowl and we'll work from there. We will go in the same order, so Ms. Hall, you'll have first crack at this first question. What is the biggest challenge currently facing Arvada, and what are you going to do to solve it?
Okay, so, this is a tough question for me to answer because I think there are a lot of challenges that we face. But as I go around the city and I talk to residents, as I'm knocking on doors and meeting people in other ways, why, I think a lot of the issues have their core in the same core issue, and that's a lack of connection with Arvada overall. A lack of connection with our government, a lack of trust in our government, and a lack of connection between the different parts of Arvada. The people in the far northeast, where they, some of them call themselves Farvada, not Arvada, don't really feel connected to the folks in southeast, who are in southeast Arvada, who are concerned about the lack of connectivity of sidewalks and the disrepair that our streets are in. The transportation issues between our parts of the city get in the way of feeling really connected. And I think that we need to build stronger connections and transparency and trust.
Mr. Palm, same question to you. What's the biggest challenge currently facing Arvada, and what are you going to do to solve it?
Well, I think the biggest challenge facing Arvada is growth and development, which is going to be guided by the new land development code. The land development code, the one proposed, will take a lot of the decision-making authority out of the hands of the citizen-elected city council and place it in the hands of city staff. There are provisions in the new code that will allow eight-story buildings along Wadsworth and Ralston Road, six-story buildings along 52nd between Wadsworth and Marshall, and up to 18-story buildings in the Candellas area, right next to the foothills. The solution is to get the citizens involved and understanding the impact this code is going to impact, the way it's going to impact Arvada.
And finally, Mr. Williams. Biggest challenge currently facing Arvada, and what you're going to do to solve it?
Thank you, Jim. We've surveyed our citizens, and in my walking around this community, I've heard it loud and clear: traffic congestion and the perception that growth is causing it is what the major concern is. I am Mr. Transportation at the Metro Mayor's Caucus, and I've been working at the local level, regional level, and statewide level, working on getting additional funding. You've heard that here at the local level, we've dramatically increased how much money we're spending on our local roads, and I will continue that. While it's been suggested that we ought to get it to 15 million, I'm going to give Mr. Devin even less hair by saying we need to get that to $20 million a year in terms of what we need to be spending on our local roads. I champion 3F, which helped get us the money to do the work that needs to be done on Ralston Road and 72nd Avenue, and will continue to be a champion for transportation issues for years to come.
All right, good. Three different answers, and now we move on to Mr. Palm to answer the question first in this second round. Many businesses and residents have expressed concerns about homelessness in Arvada. What approach would you take to address these concerns?
Well, over 90% of what we see and call homeless on Arvada streets are actually urban campers and career vagrants. These are lifestyle choices. I have been there. The solution is creative ordinances like Denver's ban on camping, zero-tolerance enforcement of trespassing laws. There are more than enough state and county resources available for the less than 10% that are truly homeless. In reality, the issue we're dealing with is actually a lifestyle choice. Compassion dictates that we feel sympathy for those that are living on the streets. Having personally spent over six years living there, I'm familiar with the lifestyle. In those rare instances where individual circumstances result in true homelessness, there are more than enough state and county resources to deal with that. Over 90% of the people we see begging on the streets choose that lifestyle. Allowing them to mooch on society causes them to lose the motivation to be responsible for themselves. That says stop.
I was kind of into it, okay, but you don't get that perspective, so I was really interested in the answer. We'll talk offline. Mr. Williams. Businesses and residents expressing concern about homelessness in Arvada, what approach have you taken and are you going to take in the next term?
Thank you, Jim. This is truly a regional issue. It's not just an Arvada issue, and we've seen it throughout the region, the state, and the nation. We are working on this issue at both the local, regional, and statewide basis. What I'm involved with is through the Metro Mayor's Caucus, and we've looked at ways to give financial assistance through a flex fund, to providing some monies to help some individuals get out of that cycle of poverty. This was a major topic at my State of the City speech this year, which I gave right in this room, and I would urge you to look at YouTube at that. I would also urge you to look at YouTube for an incredible video on Seattle is dying. And because that shows the approach that that community has taken that has frankly not worked, because it's been a very hands-off approach, we're not doing that in Arvada. Our Arvada Police Department has the assistance of social workers who are going with them and other things of that nature. Thanks.
And Ms. Hall, same question to you.
So homelessness is an increasing concern in Arvada, and it's complex and multifaceted, and there's not a simple solution. Neither tougher law enforcement nor ignoring the problem is going to solve it. To address it, we're going to have to collaborate with our neighboring municipalities and counties and the state, as well as involving local citizens in planning to prevent and end homelessness. Some specifics that we need to do include increasing access to stable and affordable housing for people, increasing access for education and meaningful and sustainable employment for people experiencing or at risk of homelessness, implementing evidence-based practices, even though Mr. Palm doesn't believe in them, such as Housing First and Crisis Intervention, supporting our nonprofit and religious entities who are doing their best to provide services for Arvada's homeless, and addressing the issue of affordable housing, which was another question in this forum that I didn't get to answer, but which is truly vital for Arvada.
All right, we are going to talk trash with this last question. Kick things off with you, mayor.
Thank you so much.
Do you believe the city of Arvada should pursue a single-hauler trash service? Why or why not?
We first discussed this subject back in 2011, and it was a pretty bloody fight back then. And when this issue came back, I wasn't going to shy away from it. It's an important issue. I live in an HOA that has a single hauler, so I certainly see the benefits. I also understand the other side, both from the discussion in 2011 and the discussion now. You know, we put out an RFP, and unfortunately, the numbers that that RFP gave us were not very encouraging. A lot of our residents were going to end up paying more for the trash service, and I don't think that's what people want. So we've asked for their last and best offers from these trash haulers, and we're going to look at those numbers, and if they're up a better range, then we'll continue the discussion. I believe this is an issue that needs to go to the vote of the people, just as we did with broadband. I think this is too important an issue to simply have city council make the decision. I think we need the input from all the citizens on this topic.
Ms. Hall, same question to you.
As a member of the Arvada Sustainability Advisory Committee, I'm really glad that the city is pursuing organized waste hauling. I'm also glad that council decided to negotiate and work on getting more information on this because it was not time for it to go to the voters, because there was not enough information for the voters to make a good decision. Council will need to make that good decision. I tend to think, I tend to be favorable to an organized waste hauling system because I believe that it does offer economies of scale and that there will be a way to bring that information in and bring those bids in in a way that does save money for a majority of Arvada households. I also believe in it because of less wear and tear on the street. With an organized system, only one truck visits the street in a week for trash and one truck every two weeks for recycling. That's as opposed to as many as nine right now. And I live in a neighborhood that does not have an HOA, and those trash trucks go down my street every week. And the other thing is over 70% of cities do have organized waste hauling.
Okay, thank you very much. On to you, Mr. Palm. Same question. Single hauler trash service, why or why not?
I am definitely opposed to single hauler trash. The city has no business interfering in private market and creating a monopoly. Competition has always produced better results at a cheaper cost, and there is no such thing as one size fits all when it comes to trash.
All right. We're on to the fire round now, and we'll start with Ms. Hall. Favorite restaurant in Arvada?
The Bluegrass.
The Bluegrass. Mr. Palm?
Georges.
And Mr. Williams?
All Arvada restaurants.
Yeah, that's three words. All right. Way to take a firm stand on that one.
Hey, it's like kids, you know? You love them all.
Love them all, right. Mr. Palm, what did you want to be when you grew up?
Older and wiser.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Williams?
Attorney Perry Mason.
Uh-huh. Ms. Hall?
A minister like my dad.
Okay. Mr. Williams. Pet peeve? I think he's narrowing down the field right now.
That's right, that's right. Irrational partisan politics.
Okay. Ms. Hall?
Red left turn arrows.
Mr. Palm?
Traffic.
Traffic in general. All right. Mr. Palm, let's start with you with your role model.
My dad.
Mr. Williams?
My wife, Luanne.
Okay. Ms. Hall?
My dad.
All right. Favorite sweet treat? Ms. Hall?
Dark chocolate.
Mr. Palm?
Homemade ice cream.
And Mr. Williams?
Malted milk balls.
Not a wrong answer in the bunch. We have closing remarks now, 60 seconds each, and we'll kick it off in reverse order with Mr. Williams.
Boy, that clock runs awfully fast when you're trying to talk. I want to thank the chamber. You've heard me, you know me. I'm a proven commodity. I am a proven leader. I'm a dynamic leader, and I am the leader that Arvada needs moving forward. I have a track record, an established track record, and I think it's a good track record. The fact that we all love Arvada, I think, is a testament to the leadership I've provided during my years on city council and the great work of our team and of our staff through that, and all the city councils who have served. Find out more about me at markwilliamsformayor.com. I am your mayor. I am Mark Williams, and I love this community.
Mr. Palm?
Again, thanks to the chamber for this opportunity. In closing, in this race, I am the only candidate for Arvada, the only one with firsthand experience in plutonium cleanup, the only one that's managed multifamily and Section 8 housing, the only candidate that actually lived homeless on the streets, not to mention I have 15 years' experience in finance and a small business owner for over 35 years. My top three priorities are fixing our roads without increasing taxes by allowing regulated retail marijuana sales, again, pot for potholes, respecting citizens by empowering them with the creation of an ombudsman, and making it easier to get initiatives on the ballot, and number three, shutting down urban renewal. There's no slum and blight anymore. They did a fine job of taking care of that, but it's now being used as the development arm of the city, and that's wrong. Please visit my website, davepalm.com, for any other information.
And Ms. Hall, 60 seconds.
So I want to thank the chamber for this forum, but also for the terrific Community Impact Breakfast that happened every month where I've learned a whole lot. And I want to thank Kami for being a great timekeeper. She smiles when she says stop. And for her leadership of the chamber. You can find out more about me at my website, harriethallforarvada.com. And I'm not going to go into any issues in my closing. I'm just going to say that I think that this campaign and this election is about what kind of leader does Arvada need. I believe that Arvada needs a leader who is a creative, visionary, thoughtful, and collaborative leader, and I believe that I am that leader. So please vote, mail in your ballots before November 5th, and I ask you to please vote for me.
Let's thank Harriet Hall, Dave Palm, and Mark Williams. One of these folks will be your mayor at this point next year.